Oh, well, that's different. That's different.
I'd like to call to order the June 5th Canal Winchester City Council Public Hearing to order. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amos.
Present.
Ms. Amos. Mr. Busker.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Milliken.
Here.
Mr. Shea.
Present.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Need a motion to excuse Ms. Amos? So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Clark, second by Mr. Walker. Roll call.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Purpose of this public hearing is ordinance 23-021, an ordinance approving and adopting the 2024 tax budget. This time we'll turn the floor over to Ms. Amanda Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. We are here this evening to talk about the 2024 tax budget. The tax budget is where the county commissioners ask us what we believe we are going to bring in for revenue and what we believe we're going to expend in our next fiscal year in order for them to set millage, which relates directly to your property taxes and how much property tax a homeowner or business owner pays, a property owner pays. The whole purpose of this is related to voted debt. So we, the city of Canal Winchester, do not have any voted debt. So our millage does not change. Typically, when you will see a school district put a ballot out on to issue debt, they are looking to recoup a certain dollar amount every single year for the length of that levy. That dollar amount, let's say it's a million dollars, gets spread out over all the property owners. Well, each year, property values change, additional properties come online that are being charged to this millage, and so the millage gets spread out amongst more and more property owners. Does that make sense? So that's what this whole process does. For us as the city, this is just an exercise. It's something we're required to do even though we don't have any voted millage. So what we'll talk about tonight, we're going to focus on the general fund because that's really where the bulk of this, for us, where our revenue comes into and where we expend it. We are going to, we'll touch on a couple of our special revenue funds, we'll touch on our utility funds, but really, we're going to spend most of our time talking about the general fund. So we're going to talk both about revenues and we're going to talk about appropriations. You're probably going to hear me say this 15 times during this presentation, these are not our final appropriations, okay? So this is what we know of as of today. A lot can happen between now and the fall and likely will happen, which means that this budget will change. So bear with us. Again, this is an exercise that we're required to go through, and we will present final appropriations with a lot more detail come the fall. So we are, most of you have heard me say this before, so I'm not going to dwell too much on some of the basic stuff, but please stop me if you have any questions, okay? So in our general fund, this is our largest and least restrictive, by least restrictive, I mean, we can use it for pretty much anything that is, that the city is legally allowed to spend money on. So this accounts for all the activity of the city, except if we have a revenue source that is restricted by law, and we'll talk about those in a little bit. But when it's restricted by law, it goes into a separate fund with separate requirements for what it can be expended on. So in the general fund, this is where we put our taxes. This is where we're going to put building and development fees, where we're going to put the pool revenue, corp fines, state funding, you know, we do still get some funding from the state, things like that are going to go into this fund. So, starting with what the county, so this is the county commissioner form that you're looking at here. So under local taxes, we're talking income taxes. Our single biggest source of revenue in the city is income taxes, right? We talk about it all the time. We also have our property taxes, and then what constitutes what they refer to as other local taxes, which in our case is mostly the bed tax money, which we have seen a significant increase over the last few years, as well as our cable TV franchise fees and admission taxes. So let's talk about our income tax. Again, largest source of revenue we have. In 2022, you can see that 76% of our revenue in the general fund was income taxes. So that's three quarters of our revenue. So if something were to happen to that revenue source, you know, what are we going to do? So in our 2024 budget, you'll see that that percentage changes a little bit. It's, we're a little more dependent on the income taxes, but again, that's what we know of today. So this could and likely will change. We typically do stay around that 75% in actual revenue each year. So this graph here shows you kind of where we've been over the years. The left-hand column in each year is the actual, the right hand, so like the more orange one, is what we projected. The point of this graph is to show you how conservative we are when we budget for this money. We do not overbudget here in the city. We do not expect to get more in than we realistically think is going to happen. So in 2023, which I have circled there in red, is our actual year-to-date, and that was as of last Friday, okay? So we actually did get another 70 grand in today, but I did not include that in there. So we are at $6 million year-to-date for our revenue. We did budget, I believe it was for 9 million. So let's just say we're going to hit that. Regardless of what happens in the next six months, we will hit what we anticipated to get this year. So next year, we are looking at 11 million as our budgeted revenue from income taxes. If you notice, in 2022, we actually took in over 11 million dollars. So we're budgeting less conservative than what we took in what will be two years ago at that point, okay? Again, conservative budgeting. So why are we doing that? I'm not going to keep saying it, but we are very conservative. I don't really know what's happening with the development and the effect on our revenue. We still have a lot of stuff that's under construction, so I don't want to overanticipate what we're going to get from that construction, okay? Maybe once it's completed, we'll have a little bit of a clearer picture, and then we can adjust revenue accordingly. And at this point, we've really only seen technically a little over five months of collection. So we'll see what happens in the next few months before I get to do our final appropriations, and we'll adjust this income tax number based on what we see in the fall. Generally, I'll give it up to about September because that's really when I start hammering home what we're going to do next year. All right, so where does our income tax come from? This pie chart here shows you that the majority, again, just over three quarters of our total, comes from withholdings. About 7% comes from individuals and 16% comes from businesses, like your net profit taxes. This is very, very consistent. I think that in, when I was updating all of this information for tonight's presentation, last year it was like 78% withholdings and 6% individuals, or 6.5%. So it has stayed very, very steady over the last few years as to where this money is coming from. All right, so we are projecting a significant increase. We kind of talked about why that is. It's still conservative, it's still lower than what we got last year, but as of this point in the year, we are ahead of where we were last year. So we're about 10% ahead of where we were. So as I mentioned earlier, we're on track to exceed our current, what we budgeted for at the beginning of 2023 to receive. So again, important reminder, this is what we know of as of right now, and we do have the ability to change this, so we will if we need to. All right, real estate taxes. I know I'm probably not telling you anything you don't already know, but ours doesn't change, our millage doesn't change. The only reason that a homeowner's amount of property taxes that they pay to the city would change is because of a change in the valuation of their property, up or down, okay? It's always going to stay to mills unless at some point in the future we ever have to go to them for a voted levy, but that's not something we've ever discussed. So as I mentioned, this will change, the amount we, the city, receives will change based on the number of properties, taxable properties within the city, the valuation of those properties. Annexation brings more property in, which increases our total value. We are also a little bit affected by the timing of payments. I know all of you are property owners, you get that property tax bill depending on, if you're in Franklin or Fairfield, your due dates will vary, but we do have delinquent taxpayers, and so sometimes that can affect when we get our money in for some of our property owners. So sometimes, you know, our first dump, we get two dumps a year basically, will be a little lower, and then our second dump will be a little higher, or vice versa. If somebody pays their first, or their entire year of taxes in that first couple of months, we'll get all that money in the first, and then they won't owe us anything in that second dump. So it's a little bit, it fluctuates a little bit, but not terribly. What I wanted to show you on this slide was the difference in the valuation of our property in one year. So it went up about 5.5% between 2021 and 2022. The nice thing about this is it also shows you where it went up. So our residential went up, there was a slight increase in our commercial, but there was also a significant increase in our agricultural value, okay? So what you're seeing in front of you, we have an in-county and an out-of-county. You all know we split two counties. So the in-county in this case is Franklin County, the out-of-county is Fairfield County. Really, we should just be concerned about that total column, so. The 2022 valuation is what was used for the property taxes collected in 2023. I do not have this information for '23 for collections in '24. Property taxes are done in arrears, it will likely be available to us once we get into the fall and do the appropriations. So again, we will amend the real estate tax money we expect to receive once that information is available. All right, moving on to our state revenue. So we still do get local government funding. These numbers that are up here right now are very similar to last year because I haven't gotten the information from these folks, these outside sources, that give us what we should expect in the next year. It's just not available yet, so these will all be updated again, and it's just, for me, it's better to stick with what we did, what we knew of for this year and not overestimate for next year. So again, we'll update these once that information becomes available to us. All right, special assessments. We basically have one special assessment left on the books at this point, and that's Diley Road, where we did an assessment on taxes for the improvements to Diley Road. The last collection on that will be in fiscal year 2028. Our charges for services number is really just the pool and any rental revenue, which would include the community center of the pool and our park shelters. Fines, licenses, licenses and permits, obviously a significant number, $754,000. That's going to be our development revenue, our building, you know, applications, zoning applications, things along those lines. And then miscellaneous. So miscellaneous is really anything that doesn't fit anywhere else. It's, you know, exactly what it sounds like, but you see there is a significant increase in our interest. Interest rates have risen. As you've probably read in my report, we've done a lot of moving of money, changing the availability, you know, changing where our money is invested to take advantage of those higher interest rates, so I'm anticipating higher returns than what we've seen in the past. And then lastly, that advance in, that's an annual repayment for our purchase of Hanners Park, which we did in 2015. We, the city, get paid last, so if something were to come up, that $40,000 may not be transferred, that comes out of the Gender Road TIP Fund. It may not come to fruition this year if something were to come up. As of right now, we're not anticipating anything else being paid out of that fund, so we'll repay ourselves that $40,000. That was supposed to be a, it was a $400,000 purchase, repayable over 10 years at $40,000 a year. All right, so our total budgeted revenue in the general fund is $13.6 million. This is, this is pretty high, but still very conservative. Our fund balance at the end of '22 was $18 million, so we are, we're doing just fine, to put it plainly. So then, in the expenditure world, our 2024 tax budget actually has our expenditures equaling our revenues, so we're not dipping into our fund balance. Some of this is just for informational purposes. These groups are what the tax budget requires me to kind of put things into for their purposes, but these are also going to equate to what you see in our financial statements. So also, in my written report for council this evening, I mentioned that our 2022 financial statements were filed with the auditor of State's Office. The audit is finishing up, so when you get a copy of that, these are the same categories that you're going to see on those financials. So you can kind of see where our departments and the way we talk about them here and during council meetings, how that fits into our financials. All right, so salaries and benefits, they are budgeted to increase 8%. This includes the cost of living for all of our employees, but it also includes changes and additions to our staffing. As you know, the city administrator was approved, so I have included that in next year's budget. There are some other positions that council had previously approved that have not yet been filled, but I have included those in next year's budget. Again, things are probably going to change between now and the fall. If those positions, we decide we're not going to fill them, I will remove them from final appropriations and we can put that money elsewhere. But I'd rather do it this way so that we know what our salary and benefit number, like, I guess, worst-case scenario could be if all those positions are filled. We always see an increase in budgets, mostly usually during, due to our medical premiums, but you are going to see changes in that because of what we're doing to staffing. You know, more staffing equals more benefits, whether that's your health insurance or the, you know, RPERS contribution as an employer, Medicare, workers, comp, things along those lines. So anytime you hire somebody, there's more than just their salary that goes along with it. Our total salaries and benefits in the general fund makes up about 26%. What you can see at the bottom of this slide is that our actual percentage of salaries and benefits to total expenditures in '21 and '22 were 20% and 24%. That 20% is probably a little low. We usually live in the region of 24% to 27%, which is typical across municipalities. That's what you like to see, is no more than about a quarter of your budget going to your people. All right, one of the huge things that we expend out of the general fund are these contract services. We've talked about the Sheriff's Department, this is an estimated number, they are required to give me a number for next year. This is taking this year's contract number, giving a 5% increase. I know they have bargaining agreements that will award their workers an increase, so I've built that in, but I will get a number from the Sheriff's Department this fall to use in our budget, our final appropriations. The pool management company contract, I know what that dollar amount's going to be. The development and construction contracts, that's an estimate at this point, an estimate that could change based on what Mr. Hare, Mr. Sims tell me is going to happen in the development world, you know, again, as of now. The income tax collection fee, so we use the Regional Income Tax Agency, they take a percentage of our income tax collections as their fee to administer that, so that dollar amount is based on our estimated collections of revenue. I do want to note that every year, they do a reconciliation of the previous year and how much their actual cost was versus how much they charged us with that 3%, and then give us the difference back. So this year, that number actually, we just got that cash last week, was just over $200,000. So their actual overhead and costs associated with processing returns equated to just over 1%, but they like to charge 3% just to be sure and then give us it back. So I would anticipate we won't hit that $325,000 number based on how efficient they are with their services. And then also included in this budget are these five contracts that had been previously approved by city council, so Human Services, JRD, Destination, the Chamber, and the Historical Here are some other non, or some other large non-capital expenditures that come out of the general, general fund. We do have income tax sharing agreements, we have one with Violet Township, that is probably the single largest one. We also have the Diley Ridge MOB agreement that has a couple more years on it, basically where we are reimbursing them their property taxes. That was an agreement done 2008, I believe. We have legal services, so that would be the services of Ross Brown Todd. Utilities, we've seen a significant increase in the cost of utilities. We've also added some things, you know, we've added electrical services at certain, at the parks with cameras and streetlights and our internet and just all these things. So we have budgeted to, for an increase in that cost in 2024. Also included in the general fund are our lease purchase payments, we have three of them. We have McGill Park, we have the McDorman Building, which we're standing in, and then Moody, which is 20 South High Street. So the years listed next to each of those is the year of our last payment, so that you have an idea of how far out those go. And then our debt transfers come out of the general fund, so accounting purposes require that I account for all of our debt payments out of a specific fund. That fund doesn't have a revenue source, so that money is transferred from the general fund into our debt fund to pay our debt. So in 2024, that's $671,000. That doesn't include our outstanding bond anticipation notes that we had previously issued. There's $3 million outstanding currently that will come due next May. That is something that we will reassess with the final appropriations and perhaps even after January 1 of 2024 to figure out, can we afford to pay it down? The hope is yes. But that $671,000 does include the interest that we know we will have to pay on those bond anticipation notes next year. We have our normal day-to-day supplies that come out of this fund, you know, office supplies, the copier, things along those lines. And then we have a capital outlay. So next year, we have a very robust street program planned. Mr. Peoples had previously talked to you about some updates to downtown, our historic downtown. As of right now, we've sort of fit that into our budget for next year, so hopefully we can come in revenue-wise in 2023 ahead of where we were thinking, and we can leave this in the budget. So not only would we do our normal street paving, but we would also do the upgrades that we had discussed for the downtown. Also in the budget is another, I guess, parts of Phase 2 of McGill Park, which would be A and C, at a cost of about $950,000. This money will get transferred out to a capital improvements fund just for accounting purposes. I will touch on Phase 2B in just a minute. So we also have street tree money in there. We always have to do some maintenance at the pool, the pool is getting a little older, so there's things there that we need to fix. Our contract with Sheriff's Department states that we will purchase them a Cruiser, so that is included in here at a cost of $75,000. And then every year, we do need to replace some of our IT equipment, whether that's computers or, you know, the hardware that's in the IT closets, things along those lines, so we always budget for that. I don't have an exact dollar amount on that yet, but there is money associated with it in the general fund currently. So our total general fund expenditures is, again, 13 million, oop, I guess I should hit that one, 13,607,000, which equals our revenue. Again, my little disclaimer down there at the bottom, these aren't final. Okay, so just a couple noteworthy items that we did not talk about in the general fund that we have talked about previously at council meetings. So we have the Gender Road Phase 6 project, which we were awarded $2 million, I believe, in safety funding. There is a gap between that $2 million award and the cost of construction. That is not currently included, that is something we're discussing, how to fill that gap, okay? So that, these are likely things that we will talk about more when we get to the final appropriations. 20 South High Street remodel, I think we have discussed this a little bit. When we purchased the property, we talked about redoing the outside of it and probably the interior at some point to kind of bring it back to its old historical state and what it looked like. We don't have a budget number for that right now, so it's not included in here. This is something, after speaking with Mr. Hare, that we may even look to start later this year, but we don't have enough information today to be able to talk about that too much. And then McGill Park Phase 2B, which is the baseball fields. As we previously discussed, the construction for the baseball fields is a significant cost. So internally, we need to have some more discussion about how we think we are going to be able to fund that, and so we can adequately plan for the construction of that. So I mentioned earlier about how we finished 2022 with $18 million in our fund balance. So we are predicting to finish 2023 at about 17.2 million. You know, we did pay down a good portion of our outstanding bond anticipation notes, which is why you'll see that decrease there. But currently, our budget for 2024 is, we won't touch the fund balance. Whatever we end 2023 at, we would end 2024 at, which is still a very healthy balance. If you recall, we have a 13 million budget, we have 17 million in our fund balance, so. All right, before I go on, does anyone have any general fund questions? Okay, so our special revenue funds. Earlier, I mentioned that we do have revenue sources that are restricted in what they can be used for, and that's what we consider in the accounting world, a special revenue fund. So this is a list of all of our special revenue funds. I am not going to talk about all of these, some of these have very little, very small dollar amounts coming in and out, not really worth our time to discuss tonight. This is an informational slide, I am going to send you all these slides when we are done today so that you can look back on these, but this tells you the source of revenue for every one of those special revenue funds. So we're going to talk about the street maintenance fund, which is probably one of the largest or most active special revenue funds that we have. This is funded with motor vehicle license tax and gasoline tax. We do pay our, some employees out of here. We also pay for some of our fleet repairs and our fuel for those vehicles. So I have out of here a debt payment. You can probably see at the bottom that I put a note that there's a significant increase in the debt payment currently budgeted in '24 from this fund versus 2023. This fund has actually been paying a portion of the debt that we took out to build the new street department garage back in 2015. So this fund has also been building in balance, and so we need to spend some of that. So as I mentioned earlier, we have a very robust street program planned for next year, which includes the downtown upgrades. So to give the general fund a little bit of relief and allow us to take that project on, we're going to let the street maintenance fund take on a whole, the entire one-year's payment for the public service garage rather than splitting it with the general fund, okay? So that's why you're going to see a significant increase in this particular fund's expenditures for '24 versus previous years. We also don't typically spend all of the money in these other categories, the maintenance, the snow and ice removal and things, which is why our fund balance has increased significantly over the past few years. Real quick, some other funds. A state highway fund is also funded with the same funding source as the street maintenance, so it's just a different division of how much goes in each fund. So we can use this fund to make repairs on designated state highways throughout the city. Again, it's not a very large dollar amount, just over $48,000. And we don't like to touch this fund because it doesn't have a huge balance, but it is there for vehicle purchases or equipment purchases, things along those lines. Our permissive tax fund, again, this is a motor vehicle license fee that goes into this. Currently, we are using this for our larger vehicles that we have leased and taking the payments out of it, so we do have one in the amount of $29,500 that will be coming out of there next year. And then the Gender Road TIP, I did touch on this briefly earlier about Hanners Park and the $40,000 advance into the general fund, but we also have an agreement for our Winchester Boulevard extension. This was done many, many years ago. 2024 will be payment eight of 10 on that agreement, which is also $40,000 a year, excuse me, with the exception of the last payment, which will just be the balance, I believe it's a little under 40, somewhere in the $38,000 to $39,000 range. So we're getting close to being done with that agreement. And then we used the gender, well, the Water and Sewer Connections Fund advanced money into the Gender Road TIP Fund to complete the Bixby Road Utility Extension that we did a couple years ago, and as money comes into the Gender Road TIP Fund, we are slowly repaying that money to the Water and Sewer Connections Fund. So I do have money budgeted in there to make repayments to both of those funds next year. Again, the city gets paid last, so if something comes up that we need to use the Gender Road TIP Fund from, those repayments may not happen, or the dollar amounts may be smaller. So it's there, depending on how much revenue comes in and what we anticipate having, happening out of that fund next year. All right, the bed tax fund, this obviously has grown significantly over the last several years due to the addition of the hotels, so currently, we have it So currently, we have it budgeted, where half of it's going to destination as required. The bed tax grant is set at $25,000. And then council had previously passed an allocation to several community organizations, so that's where that $112,000 number comes from. That is all based on the anticipated revenue that we will bring in, in 2024. The Bixby Road TIF fund, this is a newer fund. 2023 was actually the first year of collection in this fund, so I just wanted to point it out because it is new. So if you're trying to compare last year to this year, you may not, you're not going to see it. Very minimal expenditures right now. We have to account for what the county charges us to collect and administer, the property taxes, so that's the only expense you'll see out of there for next year. All right, so all the other revenue, special revenue funds that were listed on that first page, really nothing significant, nothing worth talking about tonight, and they all have very minimal expenditures budgeted, so. Does anyone have any special revenue fund questions? I promise I'm almost done. All right, debt fund, called the general obligation fund, but this is where we pay for our debt. Anything that is not specifically related to utilities. So utility debt is paid out of utility funds. Our general obligation debt paid out of the general fund slash debt service fund, transferred from the general to the debt fund. So we don't have a ton of outstanding debt, to be quite honest with you. As I mentioned, we don't have any voted debt, but this page here shows you exactly what we have outstanding in the general obligation world. So not much, honestly, and this, this will all be paid off by 2042. Now, obviously, we're probably going to take on more debt between now and 2042, but it is not going to tax our city by any means, taking on additional debt because our debt is so low, okay? As I mentioned, the paydown of the band principle isn't included in the 2024, but the hope is that we will be able to pay that down. All right, utility funds. So we do have the water sewer stormwater funds, which are all funded through user charges, so when you pay your utility bills. We also have the Water and Sewer Connections Fund, which is when somebody wants to tap into our lines, they have to pay a connection fee, and that's where those funds go. I did want to point out two newer funds that fall in this category, the Canal Point Industrial Public Water System Fund and the Pickerington Water Capacity Fee Fund. Council had approved these in late 2022, the establishment of them for actual revenue to start flowing into them in 2023. Again, these are, so these are not new funding sources. We are merely redirecting funding that used to be going into the regular Water and Water Connections Fund to these other funds to help us account for the fact that the EPA, in their eyes, we have two water systems. So we tried to separate them out for reporting purposes to make it easier on our water department and filing all their required reports. So the Pickerington Water Capacity Fee Fund is actually what we consider an agency fund, meaning that I don't need to budget it because that fund, those monies are not ours. We are collecting them on behalf of the City of Pickerington and then remitting them to the City of Pickerington, okay? We used to do that through the, our own Water Connection Fund, but again, we established this to make it a lot cleaner, more easily identifiable what belongs to Pickerington, what belongs to Canal Winchester. So the revenue estimates in the water and sewer funds are based on our number of users, what our average usage is and what our rates are. And in 2022, city council passed a rate ordinance where we will have an, an increase effective in 2024, so that's taken into account in our revenue estimates for these numbers. On the expenditure side, both the water and sewer do have a portion of the city administrator salary and benefits. You know, the city administrator is tasked with overseeing everything in the city, so it's only fair that the water and sewer funds bear a little bit of the cost of having that position. And then there's also the same increase in salaries and benefits for those employees that we talked about in the general fund, the cost of living, health insurance, premium increases, things like that. Chemicals and utilities, they continue to increase, so we're anticipating increases again. And then the debt payments. So the water does not have a ton of debt outstanding. They have about 1.7 million currently. We do have a project that we are undertaking this year that will come online. I don't have enough information right now to include that, but in the fall, I will have more information to include that budget, or, excuse me, that debt payment in our budget. The sewer fund is in even better shape. So we, 2024 will be the last year on two, two of the three outstanding sewer debts that we have, okay? So they're going to go away after next year, which will leave one outstanding, which has about a half million dollars or so left on it. But that takes us to the bottom of this next slide about the Headworks project. At this point, you know, they're still in the detailed design phase. I don't have enough information to include anything in the presentation in regards to that and its effects on 2024. We will likely have more information come the fall when we do the appropriations, the final appropriations.
But it's significant.
It is very significant, yes, but the point of the previous slide was to show you that there are not much happening debt-wise in the sewer fund, which is fantastic, which is going to allow us to take on that debt. I wanted to touch on the stormwater fund. City council did approve, again, with that rate ordinance in 2022, an increase in the stormwater rate, so that is taken into consideration in the revenue projection. On the expenditure side, this fund is slowly building. We know we're going to have some large equipment needs, stormwater-related, potentially in 2024, maybe in 2025 if we can ride it out a little bit, so that, we're definitely going to need, need that increase in revenue that city council passed. The biggest thing we're talking about is a new street sweeper. I don't know if any of you have seen the one we have, I shouldn't say see, heard the one we have. So that's something we've been talking about for several years. We've had to put a lot of money into it repair-wise, so we're going to try and fit that into a budget here, hopefully, maybe next year, maybe the year after, to get that replaced. And then the water and sewer connection funds, again, I touched on where that revenue source comes from. We've seen a lot of activity in the last several years because of the development. These funds are really used for emergency repairs and things along those lines. We do use them for larger projects, so we have the large water line project, we have the Headworks project again. We will be using some of these funds for those projects, but we also do include budgeted revenues for emergencies out of both of these funds. All right, just a real quick recap about this tax budget. It's not the final budget. I told you I was going to sound like a broken record. Revenues can and likely will change between now and the end of the year, and that's okay. And then the final appropriations I will bring to you in the fall. Out of all of the city's funds, we have two funds next year where our expenditures are exceeding revenues, the street maintenance fund, we talked about that, taking on one full-year debt payment to allow the general fund to have extra money for the street program. And then the Canal Point Industrial Public Water System Fund, the only reason that expenditures exceed revenues in this one is a timing thing. We bill bimonthly, which means we also collect money over the course of two months. Pickerington does theirs monthly, so there's always a little timing issue there, so this is just to account for that. All the other funds that were mentioned tonight and not mentioned have a balanced budget for 2024 as of today. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I, just a quick, Mrs. Amick and I were talking about, we saw that the city's 500,000, roughly $500,000 up on revenue. Do you have any indication if that is increased number of jobs that are in the city, or is that from people that we're collecting more that are from in-home, working, you know, at-home type?
So that is a very difficult question for me to answer, and I'll tell you why. So back when people started shifting to working from home, I had many discussions with the Regional Income Tax Agency about how to capture the change. Problem is, they can't, because all that changed on, was on the employer's side, it wasn't on Rita's side. So when an employer is withholding funds from their workers, all they did was change from, let's say, downtown Columbus to Canal Winchester. But when they remit that to Rita, it, they don't have it flagged any differently. So they can't tell me that anything changed with that money, to show me that it's a resident tax versus a workplace tax, and they've tried everything. The system just isn't sophisticated enough to provide that information. So unfortunately, I can't answer that, Mr. Clark.
Do they, do they tell you where their employer is? Like, it would be like Nationwide Insurance or something, and then they would say that person is from, well, we know we don't have, you know, Nationwide's not in Canal, so.
Correct. So what I can do is I can pull up every single business that remits withholdings and look at all their filings and all that. But it does not give you that detail. It'll just say, here's where all the municipalities we withheld income tax for, here's where it was workplace, here's where it was resident. Now, most of the businesses in Canal Winchester are large enough that they're required to do that every two weeks, which means, over the course of the year, you know, there's 26 filings that I would have to go through for a specific business in order to determine that. It's a lot of work, unfortunately. There's no easy way for me to answer that.
Do we have a rough order of magnitude as to how many net new jobs would have gone against that number?
I, I don't know if, Mr. Hare might be better posed to tell you that with the development. For me, they don't give me employment numbers, so. Okay. I'm not sure if he, if he can answer that or not.
Can they do a count on the, just on the social security numbers that they're collecting on, and year-to-year comparison?
I mean, they might be able to. I, I truly, I do not have access to that information. I don't know if they have it in an easy format for them to calculate that. I truly just don't know, unfortunately.
I would imagine we're not the only city who's asking them for that, too.
Right, right, so.
I have a question, actually.
Yes.
On the estimated encumbrances, if I remember from your lessons last year, encumbrances is money that was previously budgeted and is committed to an item or expense that isn't actually spent and carries over.
Correct. So the encumbrances would be an open purchase order. So in order for anyone at the city to spend money, they have to open a purchase order. If that purchase order has not been closed or completely expended by the end of the fiscal year, it is carried over, and that is what an encumbrance is. So it is, in this case, when we're talking about '23 and '24, and a carryover purchase order would be taking 2023 budgeted revenue and adding it to the 2024 budget. Does that make sense?
Yes, so.
So we're not using 2024 money for 2023 expense.
I, I get, I get that.
Yep.
Does any of it ever become, oh, we don't need that anymore, and unencumber it, and it comes back?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, that's exactly what happens to it. If we don't spend it and the purchaser is closed, it goes back into the unencumbered balance of the general fund.
All right, so the encumbered money is a PO's, actually, it's been issued, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Jackson, this is Justin Educate-Laurie question. What does P-I-T-I-E stand for? It's under the special services, something for Dailly Road.
See, we always call them a pilot payment. What's P-I, I can't remem. Mm-hmm. Payment in.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, we always call them.
Tax increment equivalent.
There you go.
Okay, the number, the amount was sort of large, so that's what I was asking about.
Yes, so that's when property tax money, it's a TIF.
Okay.
Tax increment financing.
Okay.
Which is what Mr. Boggs is saying, TIE, tax increment equivalent. So it's the redirection of property tax money into a special fund, and all those agreements had to have been previously approved by city council.
And, and why is that a special service?
So when, when city council approves a TIF, the funds that are generated from that TIF can only be used for public improvements in that TIF area.
Got it.
Which then restricts them.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Jackson, I'll just say thank you for breaking that down and being so thorough and explaining it in such a way that it's easy to understand.
You're very welcome. So the tax budget is on for three reads, so if at any point, over the next three meetings, you have more questions, please let me know, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson.
At this time, I just want to make note that there's nobody here available for public comments, so at this time, if there's no further council discussion, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion was made by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Busker. Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Timeout is 6:14. Anybody need a break? All right, moving on.
Ordinances, after getting the ethics opinion.
No, we could go draft this. If we've done the opinion other way, we wouldn't adjust it.
Okay, so we don't need to adjust it. So we are not allowed to do it.
I'd like to call to order the June 5, 2023 Canal Winchester City Council Work Session. Roll call.
Ms. Amick.
Present.
Ms. Amick. Mr. Busker.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Milliken.
Here.
Mr. Shea.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Do I have a motion to excuse Mrs. Amick?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Mrs. Amick, seconded by Mr. Shea.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Also in attendance, Public Service Director Matt Peoples, Development Director Lucas Hare, Finance Director Amanda Jackson, and Law Director Thad Boggs. First brings us to a request for council action, Resolution 23-015, a table resolution. Council would like to open, anyone like to open that, this up?
I'm moved on table Resolution 23015.
Second.
I have a motion to untable Resolution 23-015. A Mr. Shea, seconded by Mr. Busker. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Milliken.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Do you want to talk about the letter you received from the Ethics?
So as we had previously discussed, the issue of interim pay increase for members, which is provided for in the charter, raised a potential issue under the Ohio Ethics Law, as did the notion of conditioning the increase for the second year of the biennium upon employees receiving a cost of living adjustment for that year as well. And so I submitted on behalf of the city a request for an opinion from the Ohio Ethics Commission to make sure that those issues were, were in the clear, to determine whether they were permissible or not under Ethics Law, and the Ethics Commission returned its opinion stating that that is not permissible. So the way that the ordinance is written currently, it was conservatively written, assuming that the Ethics Commission may come out that way. So there's no need to revise the legislation that is before you this evening. If it is adopted, then members who are elected to new terms at this year's November election will receive the increased salary that is contemplated, and it would be lockstep increase for the second year of the biennium, regardless of whether a cost of living adjustment is initiated for employees in that year. So happy to answer any questions if you have them.
So we, I'll start it off, I guess, this is, so we'll have members making different amounts of money, council members making different amounts of money. Some will get the increase, and some will have to wait the, like, I call it the four that are up for election and the three that are up for election cycle. The four would have to wait until they would be up to receive that increase. And at, at the same time, in those two years, there might be another resolution for another pay increase, possibly, that would then affect the, the other, the other, you know, the other batch of members that. the other, the other, you know, the other batch of members that, am I understanding that kind of correctly?
Yes, it is conceivable that in 2025, a pay increase would be passed that would affect only those members who are elected and take office in January of 2026. So, you know, they may then leapfrog the people who are elected November of this year. But because of the way that council, because of the way this opinion came out and because of the way the council sets its salary under the charter and has to do so every two years, I, I don't know that there is a way to avoid that.
Okay. Another question. So if, if we had four people that could not vote on this because they had to abstain if we wanted to enact a pay increase this year, oh, no, okay, they could vote for it, they're just realizing they wouldn't get it.
Exactly.
The light bulb just went off.
And if they, even if they abstained from it.
Okay.
They would not be able to receive it.
Right. Okay. Okay. But then, so, so, but what if they would abstain, if four would abstain just being cautious and three would vote for it, would it pass three votes to, because there's nobody voting in dissent, or does it have to have four votes to pass?
It has to have four votes to pass council.
So the, the off years when the four can't vote, you can't raise, then that, that's off, you can't raise.
Everybody can vote on it. It's just that the people who will be incumbents staying on into the new year won't be able to.
Yeah, that's what.
Get that raise.
What about Mr. Buskirk? He's up for, for midterm thing here. So he would be, stand for election and he would be eligible then, correct?
But that's an unusual situation we're facing this year because of the appointment.
Yes.
But typically, yeah, you'd have.
Because after you're elected, then you're like a fresh start, right?
Right. The intervening election, whether that's for the at-large term or for the balance of the unexpired term, is the, it cuts off. So whoever's elected would be able to get the increase.
How many people have you seen follow this? I mean, I've seen bodies, I've seen commissioners vote three votes to nothing to increase their pay year after year and get it the next and not face election. This has got to be a pretty common violation that's going on that is, I don't.
Did this set precedent?
I mean, yeah, yeah. I don't know what.
We, we may not be very popular around the state. You know, I, I can't, I, I have not really done a survey, I suppose, of times people increasing their compensation and not having an intervening election. Even under state law, so a county commissioner, because the only complicating factor here was the charter and the charter language that specifically said that there may be an interim pay increase. County commissioner wouldn't have that. So there's no circumstance I can think of where a county commissioner should be able to vote for his or her own pay increase without there being some intervening election. Now, maybe that's in July and they're running.
I guess, well, county commissioners, I guess they're set at a population base, I think, because they're different. So maybe that is state law. So that might, might be a bad example.
I know trustees are set by population as well.
But I've seen city councils increase pays and stuff. And I don't know, maybe it's always was set that way. But have, have we, do you know, Ms. Jackson, have we increased pay down the line that people have taken before they were up for election? I, it's never, our, the pay's never been increased since I've been on council, but.
I'd, I'd have to go back many, many years because city council has not taken a raise in recent memory. So, but I can look for you, Mr. Clark, if you'd like.
When I drafted the letter to the Ethics Commission asking for the advisory opinion, I went back to, I can't remember if it was 2013 now or 2015, and it hadn't been raised at least since then.
Right.
So I was, I was happy to be able to say that no current members of council would have, at any rate, had their pay increased in term, yeah.
And this is applicable to both a straight-out pay increase and the cost of living increase, correct? It applies to both.
So the, the cost of living, because the question that was posed was whether council could make their second year increase contingent upon them approving a budget that would have a cost of living increase for employees. And the commission said no to that because in exercising council's discretion over the cost of living increase for employees, they may be more influenced by the extra few hundred dollar raise that they would get than the welfare of the city. But council is not prevented from, at this point, building in the second year increase. And so it would take effect regardless of whether a budget approves a cost of living adjustment for employees, because those council members who would receive it are not exercising discretion, wouldn't be exercising discretion at that time. That discretion is being exercised on their behalf now.
All right. So forgive me if I make you repeat yourself. I just want to be absolutely clear. So right now, there's, there's basically no reason for anybody to have to abstain from this vote?
Correct.
Okay. And this opinion you received from the Ethics Commission, that's part of the public record?
Yes.
Okay. Would, did you email that to us or was it in the packet? Because I'm not seeing.
It's in the council meeting packet under.
I missed that. Okay, thank you.
Under my report, yeah.
And then lastly, so we do this every two years, correct?
Correct.
Would it be possible to, Ms. Pierce, for the next time we do this, make yourself a note two years from now to include that opinion, of that opinion in this discussion? Is that possible? Would you be able to remember that? I don't, you know what I mean?
I'd write a note of it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully we'll remember, but.
Sure Thad will remember.
It would be, I think it would be beneficial to have that the next time we talk about that.
And, and it. Yeah. And it would also be relevant for the 2025 Charter Review Commission.
Yes.
Because the charter is in conflict with what this commission, this opinion now says.
That's all I have. So anything further with questions, discussion? So do I have a motion to move to full council?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Shea. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buskirk. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
No.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Ms. Amis?
Um, yes.
Okay. That brings us to Resolution 23-021. Clark, please read the title.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a roadway maintenance agreement with Dally Ridge Medical Center LLC.
Mr. Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Clark. This would allow the city to enter into this roadway maintenance agreement. This would be for the Dally Ridge plat that we considered last fall. So there are the loop roadways there, the utilities that were installed, the easements associated with those. We approved, accepting that plat last year. With the acceptance of that plat, we're requiring that the Dally Ridge Medical Center maintain those improvements. This agreement lays out the terms for their maintenance of those. That is during the period that the TIF is in effect. So this, this agreement goes back to 2008, when the TIF was initially adopted. It's taken us that long to get to the point where they were comfortable in doing this. And they've had a lot of change in leadership that's happened since then. So this would be for an additional 15 years, that they would maintain that. They would be able to take out funds from the TIF to pay for maintenance. So if they had to repave roadways, things like that, that would be an eligible cost from the TIF for reimbursement, and that's laid out in this agreement.
Do we have to approve the reimbursement as a council, or is, since it's contractually obligated, it's just a boom-boom, some of the money?
Correct.
Okay.
They do have to present documentation that the.
Work's been done properly.
Work has been done.
It'd be prevailing wage work and, you know, meet all the terms that are required.
We'd have inspectors out there inspecting it and know that the work's being done properly.
Yeah, it is, it is a public roadway. So once it's turned over via plat, it's a public roadway, they're just required to maintain it during that TIF period.
Okay. And then after the TIF period, does it fall onto us?
Correct.
Okay. So we need to make sure that they're taking good care of it while they got it so we don't get handed a pile of stuff.
Are there any checks and balances for that? Like, to make sure that they are doing the general care so that when it is turned over, it's not a mess?
Yeah. I mean, we would, we would be inspecting it. And then, you know, obviously, if there are major issues, they have to maintain it in a, you know, a passable condition and all those things. It's, it's obviously their front entrance. I don't assume that they would do anything other than that.
Okay, thank you.
Now, since this is a special platted area, is it still subject to our zoning codes?
Yes.
Okay. And you still have the ability to, we still have the ability to take action through that if things aren't maintained, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion to move Resolution 23-021 to full council?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Buskirk, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Walker. Roll call, please.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Brings us to our last resolution, Resolution 23-022. Clerk, please read the title.
A resolution relative to entering a memorandum of understanding concerning the acquisition and disposition of the real property presently within a right-of-way easement.
Mr. Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Clark. This would allow the mayor and the, the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the CWICC and with the Gail Taylor Revocable Trust in regards to a property that's adjacent to Taylor &amp; Sons. So some of you may recall when we did a similar action with the property adjacent to the Aldi where Smoothie King ultimately built. So there's a parcel that's owned fee simple by a deceased gentleman. And it, it's wholly within the highway easement for former State Route 674. And so that ultimately was turned over by ODOT to the city of Canal Winchester when that was incorporated. And now we'd like to clean up that area. This is an area where there was, ODOT had a salt barn. So if you look at how that is, it's an oddly shaped piece of, of property that's left over right-of-way. And what we would like to do is to file proceedings to take that right-of-way and then ultimately turn it over, or a portion of it, turn a portion of it over to the property in order to allow for further development of that property.
Mr. Hare, it's primarily the, what you would see is gravel, correct? Like where the salt barn used to be and the gravel plat in front of that?
Correct. There's a triangular piece. The, the road curves in the area. It's the triangular piece that would lead to the salt barn. It's a portion of that area. So that parcel is, the parcel that Taylor &amp; Sons is on is an oddly shaped parcel. It's very narrow. This makes it extremely narrow and hard to redevelop. So this would allow us to allow a larger width of the parcel, which would impact, you know, building setbacks and all that when you're looking at a redevelopment scenario. So this memorandum of understanding, they would cover all the costs associated with basically filing these proceedings, doing surveys, everything that would be needed there.
And so can you remind me how the CWICC, what their role in this transaction is?
The CWICC allows the city to basically enter into this type of agreement without going through a public bidding process on the property.
All right. Thank you.
So I'm looking at the survey. Is this the .376 acre piece on the survey?
In the, highlighted in red?
No, the, above the red. It says within the highway right-of-way, .376 acres. Is that what we're talking about? Or is it the red piece?
Yes, it's, it's basically the three point, or .383 acre piece.
Yeah, the, the .376 is referring to a triangular piece that is on Taylor &amp; Sons north of the red piece.
Yeah, I apologize. Actually, that's not the parcel we'd be talking about. So the parcel we're talking about, so Robert S. Wood is the fee owner of the property. So it's the entire parcel in red. And it would be a portion of that parcel in the future was an undetermined amount at this point. And so it's going to be less than three tenths of an acre. It's basically the, where it says Winchester Road, it's that small triangle that covers about the W and the I in that Winchester Road, of that triangle.
I, I see what you're talking about. So is that actually Waterloo Street, though, too? Because I can't tell where the street is on the survey.
Right. You can't tell where the street is on the survey. It, the street is significantly outside that boundary. So the road curves here in this area. And so you have an area that's probably, you know, up to 30 feet off of the sidewalk or the trail that's there.
And they're seeking to redevelop this site, right?
Yes. It's for sale currently.
Can't we give them the variance they need and still maintain ownership of that land so that the city can get part of the deal when it goes on forward?
It would be, it'd be difficult to do. We have to go through a takings proceeding to get title to it. We don't own this property currently.
Okay. That's a difference then. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, the fee owner is Robert Wood, who is deceased.
That senior?
Yes.
Rest in peace. And it never got transferred?
No. So we found this in multiple occasions around the city and there, or there are more.
All right. There are, there are in many places, as is the case here, you have, because before this area was incorporated as part of the city, there was just a highway easement overlaying fee title to the underlying ground. Well, when a city is incorporated, it gets those easements. But typically, a city will want to own its right-of-way fee. So as you annex outward, you get these strips of roadway occupied land that is still held in fee by often long-gone owners.
And this has a significant number of utilities that travel through that, that area. So you wouldn't necessarily be able to build a building on that site, but you could use it for a driveway, you could use it for parking. It wouldn't affect your building setbacks. It's, it basically helps clean it up so that it can be redeveloped at some point in the future. And it's not a short process. This will take us probably more than a year to complete.
So you're asking us to just give up the right-of-way or?
At some point in the future, we would be asking to do that, correct?
Yeah. Only that sort of barb that sticks off the curve of the right-of-way. And that would create a smooth right-of-way that encompasses what's needed for the roadbed and utilities. And then that, that barb area, as Lucas said, basically where the WI and Winchester Road is, could then be transferred to the adjacent property owners. And then you have a developable site that is, is cleaner from a zoning perspective, which will help with financing and attracting, you know, redevelopment of that site.
Do you need this right now?
It would be helpful so we could start. Like I said, it's about a year process for us to go through. We're, we're talking about an area that's probably somewhere in the order of magnitude of a tenth of an acre or less.
Mr. Shea, I've got a map pulled up that shows that if you want to see it.
Oh, yeah? You got some fancy map? You guys have the county engineer's office, have all the tricks.
This is right off the auditor's page. So it's showing the, the triangle coming all the way up to here. So they want to. the way up to here. So they will extend this right-of-way through here.
Just make it straight again.
Yeah, so it makes that little pie shape.
Gotcha.
So just bring the right-of-way line that's existing here, connect it straight on down to here. This would revert back to the property.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion to move Resolution 23 Day 022 to, oh, we're passing.
No, you're good.
Is it, oh, yeah, yeah, and move it to full council?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Amy, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buskirk, roll call please.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Abstain.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
We have Ordinance 23 Dash 022. Clerk, please read the title.
An ordinance to amend the 2023 appropriation ordinance, number 22 Dash 041, amendment number four.
Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Clark. This appropriation amendment serves three purposes. In the general fund, we're asking for $125,300 of the unappropriated monies. $125,000 of that will be used for the covered bridge roof replacement that needs to occur. And then the $300, yes, it's a very small dollar amount, but this was a donation received from the Brock Strong Foundation for our Community Fishing Day that was held this past weekend. Hannah had enough money in her budget to cover the costs, but this is to kind of reimburse her for what she had spent out of her original budget, and again, was donated by the Brock Strong Foundation. The last thing this appropriation amendment serves to do is appropriate, appropriate $1,373,000 from the Dally Road TIF Fund. This is directly related to what Mr. Hare was discussing earlier about the Dally Ridge Medical Center and the plat that was originally, that was passed by council and the maintenance agreement we just discussed. So part of the original agreement back from 2008 with the developers of that area was that we would reimburse them for certain public improvements. It has taken this long to get back to actually paying them for those public improvements, and so we are now to a point where we believe we will be ready to hand that money over. So that's why we were asking to appropriate these funds. I do want to point out, the Dally Road TIF Fund has a current balance of just over $2.2 million, and so this payment will leave just under a million. However, we will be receiving more funds into this fund prior to the end of the year, so we should end 2023 with about a million dollars in this fund, regardless of this payment. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Were we able to look at any kind of historical grants from the state to do the roof on the bridge?
Yeah, we, we had actually had received a grant previously for storm windows on Town Hall, 10 North High Street. It is a very difficult process to do, and it was, we, we got $25,000 back then, and on a project that was, I think it was $75,000, so a very substantial amount of money, but it was, our project was a, a large project for them. It was more of a construction type of thing that they don't, don't go into, and it made the administration of the grant very difficult.
I got you.
Long, very long process. We decided that it was not worth it.
I hear you. You would think that the, like, you know, like our county commissioners, since it's the only covered bridge in Franklin County, that they would want to kick in. Or maybe our county engineer would like to kick in. You know, just, just throwing that out there, because it, you know, it is, it is still a county road, isn't it, or is it not a city road?
It's a, it's a closed.
Oh, gosh, it was worth a shot anyways, but no, that would be a...
So which makes, if, if it was an active roadway, it would make it more viable for, for some funds from other entities, but considering it, basically, it's a pedestrian path at this point, I, I, we don't feel that it's a candidate.
I understand. I'm gonna say yes on it, but can we call the county commissioners and ask them to kick in half of it, since it's the only covered bridge in Franklin County? They want to celebrate history?
We can reach out.
I know you'll probably get a hell no, but worth a shot. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion to move Ordinance 23 Dash 022 to full council?
So moved.
So, second.
So moved by Mrs. Amy, second by Mr. Shea, roll call please.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
A quick question. Is that bridge, has that roof been approved by Landmarks over there? Because I want to make sure it's good to store.
It is not in the Landmarks district. We're actually considering a synthetic roof. I, I met with Mr. Moore. He said that he doesn't care because it's not in the historic district. So, from that standpoint, not that he didn't care, he doesn't care because it's not in the historic district. But we, we are looking at it. I'm not sure it's gonna be able to be done because of the load rated on it, so we can make sure we're not adding any additional load to, to the bridge.
Absolutely.
Any old or new business?
I do.
Yeah?
Mr. Shea?
I got a couple of questions about the pool. I noticed the diving board got replaced. Thanks for getting that done. The, what's going on with the wall?
It should be shipped this week, but they had, we ordered a new wall in December.
September.
And they've, the owner actually called Sean Starcher.
Last week.
Last week and begged for forgiveness on it. He was working with a, a second company, and the, this is not how they do, typically do business, so we're actually getting a free set of panels and still getting the original ones that we, we purchased. So we'll have a spare set when we get done with this. Doesn't know what really happened, other than the, the manufacturing side of things, that they get their product from failed them.
Stuff happens.
Yeah.
It does. Health department issues?
We had, they, Board of Health came in on, on, it was Friday as well. Friday was a bad day, let's just say that.
Bad day.
At, at the pool, at the pool. Health Department came in and our hot water heater, something had happened to it. So they had to shut down the concession stand because we didn't have hot water. If they can't wash their hands after going to the restroom in hot water, they can't serve food. So, made sense. We were, I think we, it was about an hour, we had it up, back up and running.
That's pretty quick.
Had a plumber come in, and I started turning some dials, and we'll see where that goes.
Fired up, you got one on order?
It's, it's hot water now, that's for sure.
You got a backup on order, though, right?
No, it's brand new.
Oh, you just put new on it?
It's two years old, so.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it is a new hot water heater, it's a very large one, it costs a lot of money, and it better be working, so.
Yes, sir.
It, it didn't get back up online. Unfortunately, it was one of the hottest days. Obviously, not being able to sell drinks out of there was a little not convenient, but for the rest of the day, after, what, 3 o'clock, I think, 3 to 7, where there was at least four people in the concession stand keeping up with the line, so.
Wow, thank you. And then, is there a diving block that's stuck in the ground?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. There was at one point. I don't know if it got removed then.
Swim team was in here today, was their, their first practices.
No, there was, this one had been stuck in the ground by one of the diving boards for a minute. Like, I think it was there all winter.
I haven't paid attention.
No, I'm just throwing that out there, because, and then my 13-year-old daughter would like us to find a way to replace the chairs at the pool. She says that they're getting old and need replaced, so I'm just sharing. Thank you.
I think we need, we need a few more. We're gonna do account, try to figure out where we're at. I just saw two more of them get, get taken.
Didn't we just buy some?
Yeah, there's two more broken and going down to the trash, the loungers.
I got a pool one. Sorry, Mr. Clark, I'm assuming we're on, on new business.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, within a span of about two hours at the pool yesterday, the, the, the white paint that marks the, the depth that's all around there, I saw, like, maybe five or six kids slip. Like, they'll be, granted, they shouldn't be running, I understand that, but they would be fine until they got to that spot, and I saw five or six kids bite the dust on that. I didn't know if there was another kind of textured paint or something else we could do.
We had just painted those this year, the municipal management.
Okay.
And they typically put sand in there, so I'm, I'm not sure why, but I know that one of them was, they had to repaint, but.
Yeah, I, it could, maybe it was just the one sitting in front of me they didn't, I don't know. It was, it was really, I don't know the right word to describe it, but it was interesting to see, you know, that many people slip and fall in that short amount of time, but.
I'll throw one more out about the pool that we don't talk about today, but that pool was built before I got here in 2003.
96.
It was, it was built when I was a senior in high school. And the population of this town in 1996 was probably, what, 2,000, 2,500 people, approximately?
No, I think we were about 44,000, something like that, because we didn't hit the.
Okay. Well, significantly.
I think we were right around 5,000.
Okay, so we're about double.
Lucas was still in high school, too.
We're about double now. And I, you know, we've had an open-door policy with the pool, but at some point, with it being one of the only pools on the southeast side of town, I think we need to look at it for the benefit of our residents only or residents of school districts. I know there's pushback on that because there's sensitivity to it, but it is a city pool, and kids can bring guests, and I just think it's something that we might want to consider going forward. It doesn't have to be now, but as our population grows, we only have so much space in that pool, and we're, primarily, we should be serving the residents of the city first before we're serving everybody else.
Trying to find out who's who and where they live is a challenge.
I understand.
I will say that, but, you know, it is something that, you know, we, we mess around with, with membership eligibility every year, and try to figure out the right combination to be able to do that.
I think you had a great system going this year, because it was, it seemed like it went pretty smooth. So, and honestly, what probably drove this is the first week when it was members only, it was a very nice experience.
Yeah, it was, it was a nice, easy transition. Municipal management staff was very appreciative of us allowing that to happen, just with members. It gives members a little bit of a benefit as well, and still being able to have some, some day passes. I know day passes exploded. Is that Friday?
Friday, Saturday.
Yeah.
But it was also very hot.
But they, they did explode. We do have two aquatic supervisors over there now, both of our school teachers, so it, it really worked out well that we got them in here. Didn't have any reports of any problems on either Friday or Saturday.
Good.
With that many people in there, so. But yeah, I mean, it is something that we always think about every year, trying to figure out how that, what the right combination is, you know, with Groveport and Pickerington, we're, we're lower priced than they are typically every year, and just pretty much across the board, I would say. But it is, I mean, we get, we get calls from people from South Springfield that beg us not to do resident, resident-only type of thing. So we are drawing from, from a wide area, even, even with Groveport in and Pickerington Pool being up as well.
It's, it's my understanding, and I have not done any research on this, but I was told by several adults on Friday that Groveport has changed the rules for their pool, and they were extremely appreciative to be able to bring their grandchildren to our pool. I'm not exactly sure how they changed those rules, but they did tell me that because they were not the guardian of their grandchild, Groveport would not let them and their grandchild into the pool. So, yeah, it is a challenge to balance that, but we did have a lot of very appreciative people that we were open for day passes on Friday, so.
Has there ever been any 15, 20-year or sooner look at, at what point we'll think we've outgrown our pool? These, these measures might be, you know, we might need to take some interim measures. Has there ever been discussion about when we reach a certain population, we might need to think about it?
There's not.
I know, it's very expensive, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, not only that, but we, we curse the pool when it comes.
Yes. Exactly.
Not a lot of support.
Every year, we joke about just filling it in, so. It's one of those, see no evil, speak no evil, hear no evil, right?
All right. Any other old or new business? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Shea, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buskirk, roll call please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
We will reconvene at 7 o'clock for regular council.
Do you want to report for Shaun's question?
I'll give it to him. He said he was hearing down there, knock on people's door.
Going there.
We bought some bread.
Their eventual sequel's gonna open.
We've got sponsors.
Yep.
We need one.
What do we need?
Timing this one off.
I'd like to call to order the June fifth, two thousand and twenty-three Canal Winchester City Council meeting to order. Pledge allegiance will be led by Mr. Walker.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call please.
Ms. Amick?
Present.
Ms. Amos? Mr. Buskirk?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Milliken?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Present.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Need a motion to excuse Mrs. Amos?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Shea, second by Ms. Amick, roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
All right, time in seven oh three, first item of approval of minutes, minutes twenty-three dash zero two one, May fifteenth, work session minutes, discussion. Hearing none, I need a motion to approve, so moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Buskirk, second by Mr. Shea, roll call.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Minutes twenty-three dash zero two-two, May fifteenth, City Council meeting minutes, discussion. Hearing none, I need a motion to approve, so moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Buskirk, second by Mr. Walker, roll call.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Uh, there are no communications or petitions this evening, which moves us to public comments. Would anybody like to address council this evening? All right. Uh, reports of city officials and staff, mayor's report. Uh, Mayor Eber is not with us this evening, but we do have, um, the May two thousand and twenty-three mayor's court report, uh, need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Buskirk, roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Fairfield County Sheriff, Sergeant Walker.
Um, I provided you guys with my written report.
I'm sorry, could you get the mic real quick?
Oh, sorry, I brought my mic.
Thank you.
I could have yelled for you. Um, I don't have anything other than what's written in my written report, but I'd be happy to take questions.
Questions for Sergeant Walker? Thanks for getting the mic for that, appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I just have, did I, is it the meeting that I missed? Did you guys come and present or have you, have we not had the presi, you did?
With, yeah.
Chief Collins, okay, all right. I thought that maybe it's happened, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
I got a quick question, since school's out?
Yes.
Any nonsense or is everything good?
Nothing more than usual. We really haven't, um, dealt with juveniles recently since school's been out, so everyone's been hating themselves. Fingers crossed it stays that way.
Yeah. Thank you. Wall Director, Mr. Boggs.
Nothing to report tonight other than the advisory opinion that's in the packet and that we discussed at work session. Happy to answer any questions though.
Thank you, Mr. Boggs. Finance Director, Mrs. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. I think I've touched on just about everything in my council report at some point this evening. Um, I do plan to provide City Council with, um, some pool membership updates now that things have calmed down a little bit. The last couple of weeks have been very, very hectic around here getting ready for pool opening and we have sold a ton of memberships, so. Um, I will put something together for your next meeting to kind of give you an idea of how many memberships we've sold, how many, um, of those are resident versus non-resident. And if there's any other data you'd like to know, please let me know, okay?
Questions? Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. Public Service Director, Mr. Peoples.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Milliken. I just want, nothing to add to my written report, just wanted to highlight, uh, one of, uh, an accident of one of our employees. Uh, Chris Hartung from the, the water treatment plant, uh, was out jogging after, after work one evening. Uh, we got back to the plant, uh, he heard someone, uh, yelling for help, uh, and went across the street, found a, uh, one of the elderly neighbors was laying on a porch, couldn't get up. Uh, he called nine-one-one, stayed with her until, uh, until help arrived and, um, you know, uh, you know, obviously she, they were very appreciative. Her, her grandson came over and gave him a nice box of chocolates and stuff like that. So, uh, just, just wanted to, to let you know that's a, that's the type of employees that we have working here, didn't think it was that big of a deal, said, I, anyone would have done that, so.
Well done, please extend our thanks.
Do, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Peoples?
Thank you.
Development Director, Mr. Herr.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. Um, one item that the mayor had asked me to report on is he is working with the Columbus Metropolitan Library. Uh, they would like to host council on a bus tour to the Gehanna branch. Uh, it's very similar to what they would like to build here, uh, at the site they purchased on Groveport Road. Um, they're working to organize that on June sixteenth, uh, that would leave from here at two PM, um, and then return around four-thirty to five o'clock timeframe. Um, so if anyone is interested, please let me know, um, if you're available that day and interested in, in joining that tour.
That's a Friday?
It is a Friday.
What time again, Lucas?
It'll be at two PM.
Are there coolers?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what kind of buses.
It's Friday, it's two o'clock, just saying.
Any questions for Mr. Herr, other than that? Thank you, Mr. Herr.
Oh, I, I do have, I'm sorry about that. Um, the comprehensive plan, I know you're, in your comments, you quite talked about that they're running a little bit, is it, is it the consultants that's running?
Yes.
Behind on, so we've provided all the, the data and all the.
Correct, and we're, we're at the point now where the consultants are preparing a draft of the plan. Uh, and they've just been delayed in doing that, they've had some, some issues with their staff. Um, so that's really, I, I think they're probably just under-resourced at this point with some of the issues they've had, health issues with their staff, so, um, trying to get them to the point where we can get that information and get it back to the steering committee and get it back on track.
And it could be as late as this fall possibly, running?
I would say, uh, at the rate we're looking now, yes, it's, you know, we've got to get it to the steering committee, the steering committee needs time to review that. That probably won't be until July that we'll have a next steering committee meeting. Um, they're going to have time to look at the plan, provide comments back, we'll have edits on that draft plan, which would then go to Planning and Zoning Commission and then to City Council.
So that might not be till next year?
I mean, it, it's, it's realistic that it's going to be in the fall.
Is there anything in our contractual language that penalizes them for late delivery?
I don't believe that there is, but I'd have to have Mr. Boggs look at it.
Dad, we need to start adding that to contracts.
Cause I think in their, um, RFP, they said ten months and we were like, yeah, you know, ten months might be a little longer than that. I think we're going to far exceed that, so, um, if you could, Mr. Boggs, maybe just take a peek and see if there's anything that, um, is noteworthy.
Yeah, we're, we're right at one year right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herr. Uh, under resolutions this evening, first resolution is twenty-three dash zero one five. Uh, that's not on our agenda because it was, uh, tabled in work session and, uh, untabled this last work session, so, uh, clerk, if you could read that, please.
A resolution establishing the compensation for the office of Member of Council of the City of Canal Winchester for the period of January first, two thousand and twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Discussion?
Just one, I had a moment to digest in my head, the conversation that, um, uh, took place in work session and the compensation for the, um, incoming council members is still capped at the three percent, is that correct, Mr. Boggs?
That is correct, so it's three percent this year and three percent, or three percent in two thousand and twenty-four. And then an additional three percent on that in two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Sponsors, Mr. Shea?
I was actually going to suggest tabling it until Mrs. Amos is here. So I move to table.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor to table twenty-three dash zero one five, do I have a second?
What is the, I just, can I ask you, what is the reason for that? I mean, we, people, yeah, I mean, we miss, we miss votes, I mean, if you miss, I missed votes when I missed, last, nobody stopped legislation when I was out. I don't know what this, I would just keep the business normally moving, um.
That's fine, I mean.
Well, I think, I think right now we have a motion on the table to, uh, on the floor to table. Um, I think if we get a second, we can vote to see if we want to table or not. Is that fair?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Or needs a second.
Does anyone, would anyone like a second?
Well, hearing none, I guess that dies. Well, um, move to adopt, uh, twenty-three oh one five?
Motion to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash zero one five by Mr. Shea, do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Clark, roll call.
Mr. Shea? Mr. Clark?
No.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk? Three, three yeses and three no's?
Was my name called?
I, I didn't hear, Mr. Milliken.
Yeah, I was waiting on my name to be called, I didn't hear.
Oh, I, I thought I heard you say no.
Oh, no, but I did say no, I'll say no now.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, takes us to Resolution twenty-three dash zero two one.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes.
Point of order real quick. Mr. Boggs, now that that has failed, what do we need to do to meet our charter requirements?
If you take no action, then the current salary schedule will prevail for twenty-four and twenty-five.
Thank you.
Uh, Resolution twenty-three dash zero two one, clerk, if you'd read that, please.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a road maintenance agreement with Daly Ridge Medical Center LLC.
Discussion? Sponsors, Mr. Buskirk.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash zero two one.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Buskirk, second by Mrs. Amos, Amick, excuse me, roll call.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three dash zero two-two, clerk, if you'd read that, please.
A resolution relative to entering a memorandum of understanding concerning of acquisition and disposition of real property presently within a right-of-way easement.
Discussion? Sponsors, Mrs. Amick.
Uh, I move to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash zero two-two.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Amick, second by Mr. Buskirk, roll call.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Abstain.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Uh, onto ordinances this evening, we have no third readings or second readings. Uh, first reading on ordinance twenty-three dash zero two one, clerk, if you'd read that, please.
An ordinance approving and adopting the two thousand and twenty-four tax budget.
I'm sorry, who's the sponsor on this one?
Uh, I was gonna have that, I was, I had a question on that.
Yeah.
I did, it didn't seem to get moved from the public hearing to work session to get moved to, uh, the ordinance, I don't believe, I'm, unless I missed something.
Well, it wasn't on the work session, it was just in the public hearing.
Exactly, but that.
That's a good question.
No, you're right, Michael.
Mr. Boggs, are we?
Should we adjourn and go back to work session?
Well, one thing that you could do is move to waive the rule that would require it to be routed through work session and keep it on the agenda for first reading.
Okay.
I like that word around.
Does that provide sufficient time to get it to, uh, filed as needed?
Yes, it's not due until July twentieth, so we have plenty of time.
All right, so would somebody like to make that motion?
Well, I move to waive the rules and add ordinance two-three dash zero two-one to the agenda this evening.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Buskirk, roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Um, and so clerk, if you'd go ahead and read, uh, ordinance twenty-three dash zero two-one for first reading, please.
An ordinance approving and adopting the two thousand and twenty-four tax budget.
Thank you. Good catch, Mr. Walker, thank you. Um, ordinance twenty-three dash zero two-two, clerk, if you'd read that, please.
An ordinance to amend the two thousand and twenty-three appropriation ordinance, number twenty-two dash zero four-one, amendment number four.
Discussion? Sponsors, Mrs. Amick.
First reading only.
Thank you. Onto council reports, uh, there will be a public hearing Monday, June nineteenth at five-thirty PM to discuss a joint economic development, um, and then work session Monday, June nineteenth at six PM. Uh, there will be no meeting Monday, June, is that July third, I'm guessing?
It's supposed to be July third.
July third for council recess. Uh, and then our next work session council meeting will be Monday, July seventeenth at six PM. And with that, we'll go to CW Human Services, Mr. Walker.
Again, this is from, uh, Human Services, Alitha Mullins, here are the updates. Uh, for the month of May, we've served five hundred and six people, provided seven thousand five hundred meals through the community food pantry. May was the biggest month, uh, served so far this year. We're gearing up for the Brock Walk, so keep an eye on your porch for a bag on Thursday, June eighth. Bags will be collected Friday, June ninth in the morning. This is their biggest food drive of the year and with increased numbers, this is very important to them. Uh, this, their senior transportation program provided three hundred and forty-four one-way trips and drove two thousand five hundred and thirteen miles and for the month of May, had two drivers out for medical issues and two out on vacation. Alitha and Anna both assisted in driving clients to their appointments. Everyone has enjoyed planting in their garden beds, all made possible because of the bed tax fund and Columbus Foundation. Once again, uh, from. Once again, from Alitha Mullins, the Director of Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. CWICC, Mrs. Amick?
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. I have several quick updates for you. There's a lot that is happening right now that is all great news. First of all, they, the CWICC held their election of officers, and they were noted as followed. President is Joe Abbott, Vice President Matt Peoples, and Secretary Bob Clark. So again, these are all projects that you are familiar with, but because many of them are coming to complete fruition this summer, I thought I would just recap. Multo Properties is expected to complete their speculative buildings in the late June period of time, and that's located at Canal Point. Ten B Partners is completing their 210-square-foot speculation building at the corner of Bucie and Dailly. Walgreens is expected to complete their, their tenant finishing at the end of this summer. The Sheets at Gender and Winchester, it says June 19th, but I would say, you know, just hang on, but it will happen as near to that date as I'm sure as possible. And if you haven't heard, there's also going to be another Sheets located at Bucie and Dailly that will be in the city of Pickerington. And then I actually saw on social media today, there was some questions about what car wash was going in beside Panera Bread, and that is going to be a turbo wash, if someone asks you that. The, as far as new business goes, the Canal Winchester Schools are proposing, in addition to Indian Trails, to accommodate 18 new classrooms for all-day kindergarten and future growth that is expected to break ground in July and finish in the 24, 25 school year. And then finally, the Planning Commission at their next meeting will see an amendment to a resigning request for the 244 multifamily apartments that are going to go in off of Dailly Road. So, and the last thing I want to highlight, I had asked about the library and wondering when they were going to break ground, and they're still in the planning phase. So that's all the updates I have for you. That meeting was held on May 31st at 11:30 AM.
I just, I just had a quick question to Mr. Herr. Can you give us, and if you don't have it right off the hand, it's okay, the Walgreens project, how many number of jobs and the total dollar value of that, and then the square footage that they're taking of that building? Because people think that they're, they're occupying all that building, and they're still, there's, they're not, correct?
Yeah, so Walgreens has leased half of the building, so they're right around 75,000 square feet of that building. They'll employ more than 200 people. That's their minimum commitment to the state of Ohio for the incentive they receive there, but it's likely going to be around 10% more than that. And then it's about a $30 million investment that they're making into that building. And so there's significant, you know, infrastructure that's being built on the interior of the building, a lot of automation taking place on the inside.
Thank you.
And then there's another tenant in the building now that has had their final occupancy inspection called JJ Haynes, and so they've leased 40,000 square feet in that building as well.
So the 40,000 is going in to, who's that?
It's called JJ Haynes, they're a flooring distributor.
Do you have any figure on?
I don't have specifics on that. So I don't believe they're operational yet, but they've got the office build-out done, and that was completed just last week.
I'd say that's worth a few trees in my book.
Do trees grow back?
Yeah, they do.
Don't we have forest management standards? Like, do they plant three for everyone?
All right, thank you, Mrs. Amick.
Certainly.
CWJRD, Mr. Shea?
Oh, we got all kinds of good stuff going on over at the JRD. We're gearing up for fall sports. Current open registrations include fall baseball, fall softball, youth fall soccer, adult summer soccer. Make sure you stretch before you go, folks. Summer yoga in the park. Those are currently available from JRD, and other than that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Destination Canal Winchester is the chair. Farmers Market going strong every Saturday from 9:00 AM to noon at the Historical Society. Be sure to follow the Farmers Market Facebook page. Check it on Fridays for a list of the vendors that will be in attendance. The June Thirsty Thursday will be on June 22nd from 6:00 to 9:00 at Stradley Park. I don't know if it's the band McClans, or the band is just called McClans, but it's McClans. They'll be playing, and then Grilled Cheese Gangster Food Truck, as well as Weldon's Ice Cream Stand will be there. And then planning for the 2023 Blues and Rips Fest is well underway. Music lineup is listed on the website, bluesandripsfest.com, and they're always looking for volunteers to help with the information booth in the green room. Neither of those jobs are very physical, so if you'd like to sit and interact with people, contact Karen Stiles via the phone number on the website. CW Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Busker.
Upcoming events, we have the Community Networking and Hiring Night on Thursday, January 15th from 5:00 to 7:00 here at the Community Center. And the next event we have is How to Market Your Business Digitally. That's on June 21st. That's 11:30 to 1:00 at the Community Center, and their next meeting is June 8th at 9:00 AM.
Thank you. Next, we have older new business. We have one item here, other 23-008 deliberation vote on 109 Park Street Appeal. Does anybody have discussion, or do we have updates from administration?
Well, the, I mean, I would just note that the testimony was given at the public hearing originally scheduled for earlier in May. So under the terms of the Landmarks Commission Appeals Section, there are 60 days to issue a decision on the appeal after it has been received. That timeline would expire tomorrow unless council voted to supersede that deadline. It's council established deadlines, so it's something council could vote to, you know, countermand.
So our options at this point are to either hold a vote for appeal or just punt?
Essentially, yes. So you've, you have, and I believe it's in the packet this evening, and if not, it would have been in the packet for the last meeting. The...
It was last meeting.
May, what was that, May 15th?
Yeah, May 15th.
So the May 15th packet would have the minutes of the public hearing that was held. And so you would essentially be looking at the testimony that was given at that hearing to determine whether, under your Landmark Commission statute, or ordinance, whether the appellant, the residents, have met their burden to overcome the decision of the Landmarks Commission.
Is there the, is it the desire of council to hold a vote on this?
I'll vote.
What, what would we expect to change if we...
So the, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Boggs, the vote would be to appeal the decision?
I'm, I'm sorry, if we, if we ask for a delay or a continuance, what would, what would, is there going to be new, there's not going to be any new data or anything presented, correct? So why would we delay it, I guess is my question. We should, I guess, to answer your question, I think we should vote.
Okay.
That's just, just me.
Yeah. And then, so if I could just clarify with you, Mr. Boggs, so everybody's clear on how their vote goes, I guess. So what, a, a yes for the appeal and a no for appeal, what that would mean?
Yeah, so I'll actually direct council's attention to, I don't know if this is something you can pull up, or if Ms. Pierce can pull up, from the May 1st public hearing packet. There's a draft findings of fact and conclusions of law in that.
Is that under the law director's report?
In the public hearing packet, no, it's just...
Oh, it's a public hearing packet.
Yeah, it's just starting at page 33 of the public hearing packet from May 1st.
And Mr. Milliken's question, I have the same question, too. If we, I assume we're going to move to vote on this? If we vote yes, are we allowing it to happen, or are we upholding Landmark's decision?
Right, so the, the motion I would suggest would be to move, it would be a motion to adopt the findings and affirm the action of Landmark's Commission. So a yes vote on that would affirm Landmark's Commission and prevent the certificate of appropriateness from moving forward. A no vote would allow the resident to move forward with what she has proposed.
Okay, does that, does everybody understand that?
Yeah, but honestly, I thought that was exactly opposite of what we said a few minutes ago. So yes, saying you uphold the Landmark's rejection of the certificate of appropriateness.
I move to uphold Landmark's rejection for the certificate of appropriateness.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Busker.
I have one, yeah, I have just one question to that. I, I think I might have missed a public hearing on that. Should I abstain if I was not here for the public hearing?
If you, you can if you choose to, you are not required to, because the record of the public hearing is contained in the May 15th packet.
Okay.
Mr. Clerk, you were not here.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Busker to uphold the Landmark's decision. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, we're good.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk?
Abstain.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
I do have a question, I know that the vote is on the floor, but did Landmark's allow that for them to go ahead and move forward? Okay, then my vote is yes to uphold.
Ms. Amick?
So I believe that the Ohio Revised Code allows me to just make one statement in that I think this is an extremely unfortunate situation, and I continue to commend the homeowner for trying to do the right thing in this case. But however, we're held accountable for upholding the laws that have been passed in, in the past, and so therefore, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Any other older new business this evening?
I move for adjournment.
Second?
Sorry, I was a moment late again here.
Yeah.
Old business. I just wanted to, I know it's probably early, been a couple councils' meetings ago, just curious if there's anything yet at all on, Mr. Peoples, this would be for you, on the, and I'd like to add to it, the speaker system, not only for maybe Dora, but for the, I hate to cut out any of the town as far as that goes, and not just make it for the door, but where, you know, our entire downtown maybe, if we can't, at least for the Dora area. And if there, if there isn't anything, instead of me continuing to bring it up, I just wonder if we could, President Milliken, if we could keep that on, possibly on old business. That way, it's just there to...
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Peoples respond first, yeah.
Yeah, we did get pricing on that, and I forgot to bring that this evening. Rick Brown did have that from our previous discussions. I apologize for not having that. I could email that out to, to all of council tomorrow, and we'll...
No apology needed. I was just, I was just wanted to, you know, keep, keep it alive there, and then the, also can I add, another old business, the, I know you mentioned, I believe it was the VFW, we've been talking about it a few years before, the VFW had mentioned the hometown soldiers.
Yeah, the Hero Vaders, yeah. Hannah, I wonder if is working on the application right now and had worked, is working with the VFW on...
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Walker, do you want both of those added to the agenda as old business, so we don't lose oversight of them?
If, if you don't mind, good, good, good point.
Can we do that, Ms. Pierce? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Amick, second by Mr. Busker. Roll call.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Timeout, 7:35.